Good evening, good evening. Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, everyone in the room, those joining us online. I want to welcome you to our public work session. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge our city leadership team, our city manager, Mr. Steven Carter, city attorney, Attorney Levanda Graham Williams. I was going to get there. Want to acknowledge also Ms. Anita, who is with us tonight, Anita Sharad, who will be running the meeting and taking care of things for us. Thank you for being here, Anita.
You're welcome.
And want to acknowledge my colleagues on council. It's good to be here. So with that, I would ask that Ms. Anita call the roll.
Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dodson.
Here.
Mr. Hugo.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir.
Before we get started, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge your anniversary, sir. We're pleased to have you.
Thank you, sir. I'm pleased to have made that milestone.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, I'm honored to be your city manager for one year today. It was April 22nd that I started last year. Just happened to be a council meeting tonight that signifies that. So again, thank you so much for the work that you've done and allowing me to be your city manager, your support, not just your support, but support of all the department head, all the staff, and even all the citizens. They've given me some great support since I've been here, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. It's really been a great year for me and look forward to great things that we're going to do in our future. So thank you all very much.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, now for the reason that we're all here. We have a couple of presentations tonight. First one is going to be from Mr. Doug.
He's on the hill behind Anita.
Okay. He's hiding back there. Okay. No, sorry, he disappeared. Mr. Doug Smith is going to come present to us on the Hanson Roads Alliance and tell us all the great things that they're doing for our city, followed by our budgeting director, Mr. Dre Burt, and he's going to help us kind of understand some of the things that we're going through with our budgets. We're all going to ask for some consensus tonight because we're going to have to make some kind of a budget decision as we're moving things forward. This is not to vote on the budget. This is just to allow us to be able to put those things in the budget so that we can get to the point where we can vote on them. Finally, I'll bring all that up with a follow-up issue, which is revenue sharing for Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm not asking you to vote on public revenue sharing for Portsmouth Public Schools, so I'm just going to try to set the table as to what it is, why I think it's important, and the discussions that I've had with the school board, president, and superintendent about it, to kind of catch you guys up on what those discussions are. All right, first, Ms. Smith.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Carter. Listen, it's a pleasure to be here with everybody. From about 1995 to 2010, I spent a lot of time in this building, a lot of time in this room, and so it's good to see some old faces and some old friends and look forward to meet everybody. But again, it's Doug Smith with the Hanson Roads Alliance. I'm going to give you an update on sort of the organization and happy to take this anywhere y'all want to go. I love this picture because in many ways, this picture tells a really deeper story. You're going to hear me talk a little bit about sort of the direction that we're going in, which is really leaning in heavily on defense and maritime. And part of that is a lot of work we're doing with Newport News Ship and a lot that we're doing around the AUKUS program. How many folks know what AUKUS is? All right, fantastic. So AUKUS, Australia, UK, United States, a trilateral agreement among the three countries where Newport News Ship, where the United States will supply a nuclear-powered submarine to Australians, we're going to teach them how to build subs, there's a whole lot more to it, and I'll talk about that. But that picture has representatives from probably 20 different Australian companies as well as an Australian delegation, a lot of folks from the region there on the Bow with Wisconsin. I think it's a great photo, but it gives you a really good sense of what we're doing and the kind of activity that we're seeing. What I'm going to do is just remind you who we are, and I, by the way, I'm happy to take questions at the end, I'm happy to take questions as we go along, whatever you all are comfortable doing. Talk to you a little bit about who pays for us, right? Who invests with us, what we're trying to accomplish, what our target industries are, and I'll chat a little bit about kind of how that has changed, the results that we have. But then one of the things I'm going to talk to you about that I really want you to hear, Mayor Glover and I have talked a lot about is this is our moment as a region, and I believe it's Portsmouth's moment. And I think what you all are doing is really leaning in on many of the same things that we're leaning in on. And I think there's a, you know, when I was here, and I don't think anything changed, we talked a lot about Portsmouth as a world-class maritime center, right? I mean, that's what you are in your DNA, so we'll touch on that a little bit. Then I want to talk to you about the regional investment playbook that we're putting together, what that is, how to pay attention to that, what I think y'all's role is, what some projects and that could be in. Ms. Thomas, I think you were at, I thought it was the city term, I think you were at the EV RIFA last week.
Yes, I was.
So we'll touch on that a little bit and really appreciate you being there. Sorry, the thought is a little bit wonky, but at the end of the day, we're the region's economic development organization. If you think about the state, the state has the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. There's 17 organizations like ours around the state. We happen to be one of the larger ones. There's 10 people that work at the Alliance, but then you have another 100 people like Brian and Charlie that work in the local offices, and part of what we're trying to do is make sure that the activities between the state and the localities and the region are coordinated. We lean in heavily on international business attraction, but we also spend a lot of time on retention and expansion. Bluntly, this is an organization that was going out of business six or seven years ago. And when I was deputy city manager in Virginia Beach, they recommended that we not fund the Alliance, and Norfolk followed suit, and some others followed suit, and the reality was the organization wasn't producing. And it wasn't producing because it really wasn't given a fair opportunity. It was given a very narrow box to operate in, they were not allowed to call on existing businesses, it was really predominantly publicly funded, there was very little private money in. And so we came through a process that Mr. Moody and some, a couple of folks may remember that were here, where the localities drafted and negotiated a master agreement that said that the public sector would fund the Alliance. The Alliance would be the lead organization on business expansion in addition to business attraction. And in response to that, the business community stepped up and literally tripled the money that they were giving and matched the public money. And now we have a board that is, Mayor Glover's on our board right now, but is seven elected officials, seven mayors or county chairs, and then eight C-suite executives. And so I'll show you a little bit about sort of who those folks are. We were, four years ago, we were 11 localities. Portsmouth actually got out, too, those of you that have been here for four or five years will remember, y'all got out for a year. Since then, obviously, you came back, Wayansburg, James City County, and York joined the Alliance, so they liked what we were doing. And then this past year, in 2024, New Kent County joined the Alliance. And the region New Kent County is important to us. If you think about when I-64, when the widening is finished, when the bridge tunnel is finished, New Kent County has land and good location, and so there's a real opportunity for them to do some really interesting things. And frankly, I think one of the things we want to do is get them into EV RIFA soon. Just to give you a sense of who funds us on the private side, we have 100, we had 65 investors, we've been through a campaign, we now have 110 private investors, and you can see, it's the, one of the challenges we have is the region, it's the usual cast of characters, right? We all lean on Town Bank, we all lean on Centerra, we all lean on HII, Ferguson, and Dominion Energy, but they are all generous and give us significant money to do the things that we do. And then you can see the list of others, about half of our companies are in at that lowest level. And then what it is we're trying to do, and this, and I'll spend a minute on this, what we're trying to create is a world-class regional economic development ecosystem. You know, what does that mean? It really means making sure that we're helping to coordinate the activities of the localities, helping in some cases to do things the localities don't have the resources or the number of people to do. We're doing things like on our trips, we try to match, there was a trip, and I think Charlie, Charlie, I think you, I think you were on, we went to Chicago, and it was, I feel like it was you and me and Ray Taylor and Tom O'Grady, and frankly, I was the youngest guy on the trip, right? Any one of us could have done that trip by ourselves, candidly, and Charlie may be younger than me. We should have had some young folks on that trip training with us, and so we can take a young person from Portsmouth and match him up with a more senior person from Chesapeake and one of our folks and take them on a trip. So we're doing a lot of that mentoring. We've put Salesforce, we're big believers in Salesforce of managing and monitoring the sales activity. We've got, we're gradually going to get, our intent is to have every locality under our Salesforce license so that we'll have a regional Salesforce license. We're spending a lot of time, I won't go into a lot of depth, but on sites. We think we're doing some really good stuff these days, but if you don't have a development-ready site to put a project on, you're not in the game. And candidly, Virginia has not had development-ready sites, and we've lost a lot of projects to other states in the Southeast. We're also spending a lot of time on energy. You'll hear me talk a lot about talent and the importance of talent, but right behind that is energy. If you don't have the energy to supply to the companies that we're trying to move in here, it'll be a challenge for you. So we've created a regional energy roadmap, we've created a regional energy steering committee that has a couple of city managers, industry, military, all on there. Our industries historically have been warehouse distribution, a little bit of, a fair bit of food and beverage manufacturing, and that's really starting to shift. We will continue to lean in on those categories because that's some of our core businesses, but what you're seeing on the left is where we're really starting to spend our time. And I'd challenge you all to think about, I think this is where you all need to spend your time as well. Energy, defense, knowledge work, transportation, and logistics. I would tell you that I was one of the people that ran around here for a lot of years saying we need to diversify away from the military, we need to diversify away from the federal government. And we weren't wrong, right? The fact is, people weren't spending money the way they are today, the way they need to today. If you look at Newport News Ship and think about in their heyday, they had 16, 17,000 suppliers, today they have 2,500 suppliers. So the country is, and I'm going to talk about this in a little more detail, we're in a process of remilitarizing, right? And we'll talk about what that means, but it means real opportunity for this region. So it's working. So we historically will announce, and when I say announce a project, it's really supporting a project that your staff or Norfolk staff or Virginia Beach staff is ultimately announcing. So we are, this is a team sport. But in 2024, we announced 13 projects, almost $1 billion and over 1,000 jobs. Our goal is to support the announcement of 7,000 jobs over a five-year period, we're three years into that five-year period. If we do that, that'll gain another 6,000 of indirect jobs, that'll create about three-quarters of $1 billion of new consumer spending. So that's why we do what we do and why it's important to the region, and it's working. So if you look at the 10 previous years before 2020, we were supported about a half a billion dollars worth of projects, and in the five years since then, it's been almost $2.5 billion worth of projects. Similar results on jobs, the five-year numbers match the previous 10 years' numbers. So the new strategy is working, but this is that piece where I say, meeting the moment, and I'm going to spend a minute on this, because if you think about what's happening in this country, we are remilitarizing, right? If you pay, and I know Admiral Hugo knows this better than most, but if you pay attention to what's happening at Newport News Ship, they have an inadequate supply chain, they have an inadequate sales workforce, they'll stand up and tell you that. That is true for our defense industrial base in general. We actually, the US actually put out its first national industrial defense strategy a couple of years ago, and it said those same things, that workforce, the Newport News Ship needs something like 40,000 new workers over the next five to 10 years. That's a huge number. And so we are remilitarizing. We are also trying to bring industry back into this country, right? We learned during COVID that having everything offshore didn't work well for us, so as you try to reshore, and then we are decarbonizing or trying to establish energy security. Candidly, when you look at the new administration, some of your language changes, your strategies don't necessarily change, we don't talk about decarbonization as much with the Trump administration as we do talking about energy diversity and energy security, but it really means the same thing. And we follow Governor Youngkin's approach of all of the above strategies to energy. So to meet our demands, we're going to need natural gas, we're going to need nuclear energy, we're going to need wind. And this region is really well-placed to take advantage of all three of these dynamics. And if you think about those regions that are going to be successful, I don't think I have that slide, if you think about the regions that are going to be successful in this new order, they're going to be military metros, check. When you think about the fact we've got 19 military installations, it's going to be innovation hubs. I would argue that when Jefferson Lab finishes with the high-performance data facility, we're going to check that box, a facility focused on AI. I talked about sort of first movers on climate change or those that solve their energy challenges, and the fourth is trading powerhouses. So you think about the Port of Virginia, we check that box as well. So we are really well-positioned, and it's why I say this is our moment, if we're smart about it, if we're deliberate about the things that we can accomplish here. Mr. Thomas, I heard you, I think, talking about marketing as I was kind of listening out of one ear with Brian. One of the challenges this region has is we're really fragmented, and I don't mean that politically. Our assets are really fragmented, and it's a really, we're a very difficult story to tell about what our assets are. If you want to talk about space and aerospace and aviation, and you talk about NASA, if you want to talk about nuclear physics and you talk about Jefferson Lab, or you want to get into the military and you talk about the jet base down at Oceana, or the things that happened at Norfolk Naval Station, or you want to talk about the Port of Virginia, it takes a while to tell that story, right? And so one of the things we've started doing when prospects come into the region, we literally put them in a helicopter. And it's a little bit expensive, but it's the best way you can get somebody up, show them the harbor, show them the assets. This story is starting to knit together kind of how you tell the regional story. And in many ways, there's a research hub, there's an innovation hub, there's a manufacturing and transportation hub, a maritime and defense hub, and when you start to take our assets and frame them that way and explain them, you start to understand what an asset-rich community we have here. I'm going to talk to you in a second about this regional investment playbook, and we've hired an urban economist named Bruce Katz to help us draft this book, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But we had a meeting, he's interviewed probably 75 people, and he had an interview with a retired Army Colonel, and he came out of the meeting and he said, Fort Eustis. I said, you've never mentioned Fort Eustis to me. He said, yeah, no, there's some really interesting things happening over there around training and logistics. He said, if any other region, Fort Eustis would be the centerpiece of a strategy, so much happens there. You have so many assets that you don't even talk about it, right? And so some of this is really understanding our assets and really how we frame them and how we explain them to the rest of the world. So we're creating this investment playbook. Step one was to really do a deep dive on three things. What is the federal spending that takes place in our market, particularly DoD spending? What is the supply chain? What are our assets around talents around energy and energy supply and critical industries? So that data, Bruce and his team did that analysis. It was really interesting on the DoD side because nobody looks at defense spending at a regional level. We look at it at a city level and we look at it at a state level, but when you look at it at a regional level, we're the fifth-largest DoD spend in the country. We're the largest per capita spend in the country. That's a big deal. Part of what that also means to the defense contractors is their customer is here, and we've done an inadequate job of explaining that to folks. So as you see in this re-militarization, and a lot of it's going to happen around shipbuilding, we're not going to win the battle with China in terms of building ships. We're going to have to win it with technology, and we're going to have to win it with software. So there's some really interesting things that can and should happen in this market. We've done that analysis, happy to talk about that in some more detail. We then came up with sort of a set of assumptions of the things we think we could lean in on, tested some of those assumptions, and did a series of interviews with, as I said, probably 70 people, to then identify what are going to be six or eight concrete projects that the region, not just the Alliance, is going to lean in on. And what we're going to do is really lean in on the research and talent base. I'm going to tell you one of the things we don't do, we don't graduate enough engineers in this market to do the kind of innovation that Newport News Ship and others do. We've got to strengthen the submarine industrial base. We can't, we're really not keeping up with what we need to build for ourselves, much less for Australia. We've really got to become a magnet for those defense firms. And when I told you, I was one of the people running around saying we've got to diversify away from the military and away from the federal government, but I think the diversification today is within those spaces. So what are those dual-use technologies that work in the civilian sector and work in the military sector? And they're things like cybersecurity, nuclear energy, uncrewed systems, you know, those things that work in both spaces, and that's where you'll see us lean in. We've really got to get, do better on innovation, and we're a lot better today than we were even four or five years ago. And the one I really struggle with, and I don't know that it makes it in the playbook, but it's really important, is housing. And part of why I'm not sure it makes it in the book is I'm not, we can't figure out who needs to own housing from a regional level. But we have an affordability, availability, housing issue at all levels, at entry level and at high-end. And so we're going to organize ourselves around these, and I can talk in a lot more detail about that. And then the, so let me say this. So what happens next is we'll finish this playbook in May, June, and you'll get all of this, but June 26th, we'll have a rollout of this playbook. Next fall, we'll have a summit, so that rollout will be at our mid-year report, we'll have 200 or 300 people there. Our goal in the fall is to have 500 people at a summit that explains, we're going to put a set of committees around each one of these projects. There'll be a chairman of that committee, there'll be a next-gen co-chair, we'll try to put some folks, somebody under 40 years old lined up with that folks, so that we're developing some of the younger talent. We'll put a set of subject matter experts on each of those committees, there'll be a steering committee. So we've got a really, I think, well-thought-out process of not only how to develop this plan, but how to implement this plan in a way that really moves the needle. One of my, it's not in here, one of my favorite lines is, we're trying to move this region from a place that assembles big complicated things, nuclear submarines, nuclear aircraft carriers, now offshore wind farms, to one that does the research and creates the, that drives the innovation in those industries. And that's what we're not doing as a region right now, and that's the big change that we've got to make. You all heard me, most of you are here, I think I was here.
Say, before the election?
Yeah, so I was here back in, yeah, before the election, and talked about, a lot about EV RIFA, y'all joined EV RIFA. I won't go into a lot of detail, but I think this could be the most important regional organization we have in five or six years if we're smart about it, because it allows, you know, right now, Virginia is a winner-take-all in economic development. If a project lands in Portsmouth, you get all the taxes, you get all the jobs, but EV RIFA allows you the opportunity to invest in a project in another community and share in those revenues and share in those jobs. And so we've done one project, I talked a little bit about this, Kings Creek Commerce Center, and mostly the peninsula communities are in that project together. We sold half of it as a wind farm, and everybody got their money back, and now we're developing the other half. And I say we, we really came into this late, the Alliance, this was all in place, City of Newport News Economic Development Staff was running the EV RIFA and then just didn't have the capacity. And what we said was, y'all are already paying us, you already let us take over the operations of that, so we did. So that's our story. It's, I think, a really good story. I think the results are in, in terms of early success, but would love to hear where y'all are in terms of your thinking on economic development and where you fit and where we could be more supportive. Mayor?
Thank you, Doug.
Yes, sir.
For your question, if I have any questions. Well, thank you, I guess the presentation.
I'll just say a comment, not a question.
Go ahead. Counselor, Ms. Thomas, please.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I do, I'm glad you mentioned at the end the EV RIFA from that meeting, understanding that the HRA is really kind of the manager of that group. And can you, they mentioned something about like starting a real estate alliance, you mentioned like site readiness being one of the major key issues, can you speak more to that?
Yes, I think where you'll see, where you'll see us encourage the EV RIFA to spend its time is on this business-ready sites idea. And the way we've looked, first, I said in the beginning, the region, the state hadn't invested in getting our sites ready. Other states, no kidding, spend hundreds of millions of dollars getting their mega-sites prepped, and that's why they land Hyundai and Volvo and these big projects. When these projects come in, they're looking to open in 24 months. They're not waiting for you to put in water and sewer and roads and all that kind of thing. And so the state's got to start prepping these sites. We've done it, and we hired KPMG to look at all of our developable sites, and now we want to develop a strategy that says, all right, which are the most development-ready, and how do we get them to a point where they are, excuse me, which ones have the most immediate opportunity, and how do we get them development-ready? So we're going to have a lot of those conversations with you all in that room.
And then I want to add one more thing for my council members. From that meeting, they are looking for the next big project ideas from cities, so I wasn't comfortable sharing what I think. I do think we have some possibilities, but I think that should be something we discuss together as a council before we bring it to EV RIFA, and also think that Brian Donahue should be a part of those conversations, every other city's EDA, economic developer was at that meeting, and so I think it would be great for us to start having those discussions as EV RIFA is completing that first project that you just showed, Kings Creek Commerce. They're going to show the success of that project, but they're looking to start brainstorming where other projects can, maybe another city, what other availability, you know, with development, would it be a regional win that we could all partner with, and you know, how does that framework shake out? I think that's something that I want to bring back to you all from that meeting that we can start having the discussions.
And two things I've learned, I think I knew, maybe I've said these when I was here a few weeks ago, private entity can be a member, so private landowners could be a member in this thing, and, lost my, I forgot about my second thing, oh, it does not have to be, don't let industrial fool you. It can be a redevelopment project, right, that could be a mixed-use project, so think about things on your city line that would make sense for you to cooperate with an adjacent locality.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks for the presentation, Doug. You mentioned the large investors, we all know about them, regional-wise and a lot of them national-wise. How about, how does a small to medium company, you mentioned team effort, has a participation regionally from the small?
Yeah, it's a real mixed bag. So you can see, these companies, sort of the bottom half is the $5,000 and under, and the way you participate, and one of the things we try to be real careful, Mr. Moody, is not to say, you know, you're an architecture firm, you're going to get a project out of being a member, because you see, we do 13 projects and 100 investors, I can't promise your project, so it is, but what we've done the analysis of is, remember I told you, three-quarters of $1 billion of consumer spending if we hit our goals is what we estimate happens. I can tell you, how many car loans does that equate to, what kind of health, how many health insurance policies does that equate to? Depending on your industry, I can show you what the benefit of. In terms of how do you play, we have some really good events. Several of y'all have been to a lot of our events, and they are, they're good networking events, but they're also just good opportunities to see things you might not have seen otherwise. We got a, we had one at the children's hospital, the new hospital before it opened up. So obviously, once patients are in there, you can't go in, we gave folks a chance to get behind the scenes and see what an amazing facility that is. The networking opportunities are pretty tremendous. We're now putting together some round, we put our first, we had an investor that said, hey, listen, I'm in Richmond, and I'm more engaged in Richmond, because they have this real estate committee that I sit on. I can stand up a real estate committee, so we had our first real estate committee meeting the other day, and had developers and contractors and brokers, it was a fantastic meeting. I think we'll stand up a manufacturers' roundtable in 2025 to sort of understand what those, as we're trying to lean in on that space and bring more in. One of the things we need to be sure of is that we're meeting the needs of the existing companies as we're bringing new ones in. So I think those are the ways that you play. Thanks.
Doug, one question. Can you speak to, you know, when you talk about the key industries in defense and advanced manufacturing and maritime, why is Portsmouth so important to that equation? I know why they are.
Yeah, I know.
Why don't you share that with us?
So again, I go back to that sort of world-class maritime center. If you think about, look out your window, right? And I'm right, you can see my office from sitting here, and when we have prospects in, I say, if you want to know who we are, look out the window. And you see, you see Fairly, what Fairly's doing next door to you all, what they're doing in Portsmouth. doing in Portsmouth, I mean, in Norfolk and Newport News is pretty phenomenal, and you don't even realize it's happening there. What's happening at Norfolk Naval Shipyard is really important. I met with the new head of workforce over there, had lunch down here at Slips and Chips this past week, making sure they understand kind of what we and what the workforce council. You think about Vig, the Virginia International Gateway, that is the most efficient port terminal in the country. So you think about, and then the other thing is defense contractors. And we've never paid attention to defense contractors as economic developers. It really wasn't a role for us. You bid on a project, it's a federal procurement process. That's all changing now in terms of these companies, people, and I've met, Brian and I have met with some of your companies that are, that are getting money out of the submarine, getting federal money out of the sub program that's encouraging them to expand. So there's an opportunity for your existing customer base to expand here. But what these companies want is they want to be near the shipyard, they want to be near Newport News ships. I think you all are really well-positioned, and you've got a workforce story to tell.
Thank you.
And that doesn't even talk about, I tell you, y'all should be having some conversation about PMT. PMT is a phenomenal asset, right? And what's happening there, that marshalling yard is fascinating, right? When you ride by there and you see the scale of what's happening there, that's going to slow down after Dominion's project. You know, this administration has put a complete hold on these new offshore wind projects. So what's, what's going to happen at Portsmouth Marine Terminal? There's a lot, there's a lot that could and should happen on that site, and a lot that could and should happen to pay his taxes.
We're going to be having those conversations, I assure you. And thank you so much for the update and the relationship.
It's always a pleasure.
Before to continue progress together.
Great to see everybody. Thank y'all.
And I'll close, Doug, before you leave. Some of you may remember Doug sat in one of these seats as a Portsmouth City Councilman. So when we talk, I hold him accountable for that relationship.
As I always like to say, I didn't get invited back.
Good to see you, man. Mr. Carter, so you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Craig Burke is going to come with the next, a couple of people, basically, all of them are surrounded around what we're trying to do to finalize our budget for Councilman Moody. Craig's going to talk about both tax, civic organizations, and retirement stuff. So, Craig?
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, members of City Council. Thank you for joining me this evening for the FY 2026 budget discussions. Now we'll be discussing a proposed change to the tax structure that impacts business boats in the city of Portsmouth. We're examining this issue in response to a request from a business owner in the city. The key issue before us is that Portsmouth does not have a business boat tax structure. All the city has is a privately-owned boat tax and a personal property tax rate. As a result, you can see here, a business boat in Portsmouth pays $5, which is a full $3.50 per 100 assessed higher than any other locality in the region, and it's also much higher than the rate that personal pleasure craft owners pay. First, again, Portsmouth commercial boat tax is much higher than anywhere else. Second, the reason you would have a business boat tax be higher than a personal boat tax is that there's kind of an assumption that a business boat is going to have impacts both on the waterways but also inland. So a, you know, a business boat usually is going to be a barge, it's going to pull in, it's going to bring about a lot of resources, that's going to impact your roadways, your rights of way, and then also, sorry, roadways, rollways and rights of way. So you would think, or you would hope, or the intention is that as these costs are incurred, they would be recouped from people who actually use those services. And a personal pleasure craft would not necessarily be using those services in the same way. Should City Council agree to an adjustment, staff is recommending instituting a new tax for boats weighing less than 5,000 pounds owned by a business. The new rate would be $1.50 per 100 assessed, and for reference, that would still be tied for the highest in the region with Norfolk and Virginia Beach. And it would kind of allow us to be more in line so that we're not creating a specific circumstance for a handful of businesses. For reference, a question that's already been asked, you know, what does a 5,000-pound boat look like? That's going to be less than probably 30 feet, so, you know, something you might take out on a weekend. You would have some dinghies that would probably be in there that a business could use. This would be mostly smaller crafts, not anything large. We are seeking some council consensus on this, and when I say that, what that would be is, me and the manager would work, and we would fold those changes into the budget ordinance. And we would, probably later this week, would send out a list of all the changes that could be made. And that would be, that would be the first time you see it, and then it would come back in ordinance as well.
Vice Mayor Moody, so you have the floor. Then Counselwoman.
Trey, is that 5,000 in line with the other cities?
There are, there are a few cities that do classify it by weight. The state sets out pretty much any definition you can use for, to define a tax on it. So we are limited to the 5,000. It's an arbitrary number, but we had to pick it because that's what the state allows us to tax out. You can, you can tax at less than 5,000, you can tax at less than, excuse me, above 5,000. But we couldn't come in and say, we think 4,000 is a more appropriate number, or 7,000 is more appropriate. But it's not universal across all the localities. Some of them will just say, we have a business boat tax rate, whether you're, you know, a little paper boat or an aircraft carrier.
What is Norfolk's?
I would have to get back and tell you.
I think it'd be good to know what our, you know, when you're talking about boats, marinas, competition. So I think it'd be good to know what the weight differential is with those cities.
We have a memo on that for council that we can recirculate. This came before us a few months, a few sessions ago regarding a particular business, and so we'll recirculate that memo to council, which has all the localities.
Yeah, I think that enters into the equation.
Absolutely.
I mean, on the surface, I support doing something, but I want to make sure the weight, we're not up here and our competitors are lower.
Can I add something, Mayor?
So you have the floor.
One thing we want to make sure we consider when we're talking about adjusting the tax this way, is why was the tax set that way to start with? It is, I think, no mistake that Portsmouth set a tax rate that is 10 times higher than what the lowest is. Taxes are used for a couple of things. One, Mr. Burke talked about, hey, we've got to recoup some money because there's some things that we have to do as a result of the use of this particular device or whatever the case may be. Same thing is, you want to either incentivize or disincentivize a particular thing in your city. As it's set, our taxes kind of disincentivize this particular thing. Now, is that what we want to do? That's a real decision up for you guys. But I understand, when I look at the history of this, it was set at that rate, and in Steve's opinion, and this is just Steve's opinion, because I wasn't there when he set the rate. But when you set a rate that way, you're purposely trying to incentivize or disincentivize a particular action. So as you deliberate to think about what it is that you want to do, make sure that you think about that process also. Because when you lower this, now you're saying, we're no longer disincentivizing this, we're incentivizing this.
Right. Counselman Tillich has the floor, and then we'll go over to Counselman Dodge.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question and comments were in regards to Vice Mayor's comments in regards to the weight. I'm not too familiar with boats and how much they weigh, but I would think 5,000 ain't that big of a boat. And so when we think of, to your point, incentivizing or disincentivizing those types of businesses, does that mean 5,000 is just a regular personal boat instead of being a business-owned boat? And I think, in my opinion, I would like to see that a little bit increase. I would like to see what other cities are doing, because, I mean, a 10,000-pound boat versus an aircraft carrier is no comparison. I still think a 20,000 boat is nowhere in comparison to an aircraft carrier. And we see a lot of those along our waterways. And so, to your point, if we're going to incentivize or disincentivize, I think it's also imperative that we look at the rates that we're charging the larger ships, because ultimately, your 5 and 10,000-pound boats are not causing that much damage to anything as sheer larger aircraft carriers, not your leisurely business boats.
And remember that 5,000 is not arbitrary, that's, you know, because of the way Virginia State law reads, and we have some limits as to where we can kind of make that modification.
I do want to add just some legal points. One of the things that, when this came up before that we were concerned about is Portsmouth has a very large amount of large barges, large boats, and the code only divided it up as either commercial or pleasure. And so if we start fiddling with that, we're going to include some things that we really don't want to include.
That's correct.
Because of the impacts, because of the type of maritime community that we serve and that will fund us.
Can you give us an example, like perhaps what could be an unintended consequence?
Well, if you don't have the weight, then a large barge like at Crofton would be gobbled up in our reduction, which means we will be receiving less, significantly less income if we do that. One of the, I was, I was able to, there's some difficulty with IT on this device, but I was able to pull up the memo that we had produced before, and it looks like most of the other cities, so Norfolk has two evaluations, two identifiers, personal boats, which are 10 cents per $100 value, their business boats are $1.50 per 100 value, $100 value. And this was back in July of 2023. So they only divided in those two categories, personal and commercial. Virginia Beach, I think that's still up in the air. I think they're looking at increasing that, that was in their little discussion for their budget. But this was, most people, most of the other jurisdictions, and again, I'll send this around once we confirm that these rates are still accurate, are only dividing it up in the two personal versus business. The way we came to this particular number and division is to try and include an alternative way that fits within the statute, and that has to be done by weight. And so it gives the option, your boat just has to be within that weight range. That does allow us to save the problem of having those larger barges be done at this reduced weight. But again, the question is, what are we really trying to accomplish here?
Sure.
And what market are we incentivizing or de-incentivizing? Do we have the infrastructure to have all of these businesses then come here? Because now we're either lower or comparable. Are we, are we going to be able to support that industry? Those kinds of questions are the questions that we all should be considering. And I'll send that memo around again so that you all will have that, so you can consider that.
Counselman Dodge, and then I'll come back to you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, and in the presentation, I don't see what our current revenues are for each of these taxes and the categories in there.
I can answer that real quick.
Yes, first question, okay, go ahead.
So the overall boat taxes in the city only collect about $100,000, and that's across the spectrum. Now, one of the caveats, when I had a conversation with the commissioner of revenue, is that there are business boats who often be taxed at a tangible rate. We would not necessarily know, we couldn't run a report to say what tangible is a boat, because it all kind of gets captured and is one thing. But for the boat tax itself, only $100,000.
So it's not, it's not a significant source of revenue for us?
Not in that, not in that formula. Then if you consider the other ways that you can capture it, it's a pretty significant rate.
So if I look online real quick, a waterman's boat about this size is about 4,000 pounds. If y'all haven't seen this, that's about, if you're wondering what a 4,000-pound boat looks like, it would be slightly larger than this. So most of the trawlers out, oh, I'm sorry, most of the trawlers right outside our window would not qualify for this incentivizing tax.
Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I think this whole conversation is...
I guess one point I would make is if it's personally owned.
Correct.
It would, yeah. Privately owned.
Privately owned.
In reality, we're talking about two different business uses. One is industrial, and one is the relatively new business, pleasure business. So that's, I think that's what started this whole conversation, is the pleasure business. And so a 30-foot boat, I assume, don't know it for certain, that would take in most of the pleasure business craft.
That's correct.
So...
That was the point, I think, of this whole process, was to do a carve-out for something similar to that. But we couldn't, there's no allowance for us to say, you know, a pleasure boat. We had to use some definition that's already available for it to use.
And the weight, the weight is allowable by the state.
And there's really only one business in Portsmouth that this would be applicable to, so that's the pink elephant in the room, if this is for one.
But again, that's today.
Currently.
You change it, you may get more.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's true.
At a less rate.
Exactly. If that's what you want, cool, you know what I mean?
Counselman Hugo, so you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of comments to the manager's comment about incentivizing or de-incentivizing. I think when this commercial tax rate was set, we weren't incentivizing or de-incentivizing this kind of business because we didn't think this kind of business existed, this model didn't exist when the, when the commercial boat rate was set. To the Vice Mayor's question, I, it is one business. I asked the business owner, so I know what your last tax bill was at $5 per 100, about $9,000. Okay, so the difference between $5 per 100 and $1.50 per 100 is about $6,300 to him. $6,300 less revenue collected by us. In the grand scheme of things, that's roundoff error in the city budget. But if it incentivizes him to register his boats here, because he also has a location in Newport News and has a location in Norfolk, and so he's got choices for where to park his boats. And so I think incentivizing him to, to spread his fleet, to include us because we're trying to do the right thing to incentivize him and other potential owners of the similar, of a similar business model, probably the right thing to do.
And I'll add to that, thank you, Mayor. As we look to develop our waterfront, that's probably a very smart move for us, is to support a business like this. This is a business that grew tremendously during COVID, when people were cooped up in their house, and boating was an option for recreation. And I think that's where he really started to feel the shift in growth in his company. And like Counselman Hugo said, it's valuable to consider as we develop the waterfront, how this business would play a part in that.
Thank you, ma'am. So, thank you, Mr. Burke. So hearing the discussion, I know that there was a desire for the information to be brought back on the weight. Are we still desiring to have that information? I know that the attorney had indicated she sent it around. I guess my question is, because we, we desire, and I'm just asking a question, we desire to have a consensus to move whatever forward that we desire to have moved forward for ultimately an ordinance to be created so that we can take the vote. So I guess what I'm asking at this point, are we ready for that consensus, or are we not ready for that?
I think we are.
We're ready for the consensus.
Yeah, given what the attorney said about...
Yeah, she answered it.
It seems like that's kind of our choice.
Right, so that's, that's all I wanted to clarify. So with that in mind, based on the recommendation that is set forth in, by our CFO and our financial folks, with creating the ordinance that will have the designation 5,000 pounds and $1.50 per 100 assessed, is that where we're going?
Yes.
And can I just, yes, Mayor, can I just add one note as you guys were thinking about this? We will continue to provide you with this data, because we still have discussions that will come, even when it arrives on the agenda.
Sure.
So you will have more information for a report back in terms of what legal had provided the commissioner on this question, and anything else that may come up on the department. So this is not the end-all, be-all, there'll be more.
Okay, Counselwoman Thomas.
Thank you. Just one additional question. When the report back with that information, Mr. Burke mentioned something about like another way to capture this piece being the tangible tax rate. Can you kind of include that? Because I want to know what portion of that is... of that is.
I will try, I will try to do that. That's, it's much more complicated because of the way the various business, but we will, we will capture it in a way that makes.
Or just maybe a percentage of how many businesses, boat businesses are, I guess, we're capturing revenue via this tangible tax rate. That's not something I'm completely familiar with, but I guess tangible of the asset cost or something. I don't know what that means exactly.
Typically, when, you know, when you see the tax roll for the commissioner of revenue, it all comes in by like, I can't remember the exact way they do it, but they'll say like cars over 10,000 pounds, cars from 2,500 pounds down. And they'll do this for every kind of thing from a large machine press to a boat or anything like that. When I, when I spoke with the commissioner's office earlier today, they indicated that it would be difficult because the way they file the tangible, it comes in business by business, and then they just list the asset. But there's no code like you would see with regular personal property.
Okay.
You know, I can kind of talk to them and see what they may be able to do.
Okay.
And at least get you an explanation of what it means, even if we can't give the exact, you know, dollar amount, which we should be able to, but in a big, in a big number, but so that you can at least know what that involves.
The big number is the problem. Because you get it so segmented. You get it taxpayer by taxpayer.
And we're talking about assets that are self-reported by the business. So that's also part of it.
Okay.
Anyway, so I want to make sure that you all knew that this wasn't the end-all, be-all in this.
So my question is back to the weight, the 5,000 pounds. So I guess my question would be, we just made mention too, like when you do personal property tax, you have vehicles that are 10,000 pounds and below, et cetera. The 5,000 pounds for a boat, you could also do a 10,000 below, right?
No.
No, they're, they're very specific numbers.
So it has to be 5,000.
5,000, it's either 5,000 or you're talking about big barges.
Now, is it possible, so when we talk about differentiating industrial versus pleasure business, there's no way to include the word industrial?
No, there's only two categories, commercial and pleasure.
And that's it?
Yeah. So that tells you, and I will give you a little nugget. Way back when this council wanted to, had the same frustration, there are not enough options. So how about we just zero it out across the board? And the state came back and said, uh, no, you cannot do that. So this is something that's closely lobbied, you know, that is, it is what it is and has been this way for some time. And the legislative history is just that. They, they want it to be either these categories or by these weights. And we tried to figure out a way to kind of include this pleasure idea. And this is the cleanest way to do it. And I think maybe what you all are asking is like what, how many boat, what type of boats or how many boats is 5,000 really capture? And I think we can probably get that from the legislative history in this. And so let me look into that and report that back to you.
Councilman Doss.
So one of the problems that occurred up in Stingray Point, that's the town there, where all the boats are, Kilmarnick, outside of Kilmarnick, was that a lot of the, as the businesses took over the peers, some of the other home peers became mini marinas. Do we have regulations that, that I haven't read up on it, that state the number of maximum boats before we classify as a marina at house? I'd like for us to consider that too, because if this chases boats out to the home peers, then the home peer could become a crowded and annoying market to it. And what they did up there in the north, northern neck was say anything over five boats is classified as marina and comes under regulations. I'd like to ask if we could consider some ordinances along those lines to, to prevent some private waterway crowding.
Okay.
Okay.
On the floor? Okay.
That won't happen immediately.
Correct.
Right. So what we'll do is then we will then, then defer the consensus until we get the additional information. Is that what I'm hearing? Or we're going to move forward?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
That's why I asked the question. Because I'm hearing that we coming back with some information, then okay, okay. So yeah, because I was kind of taken off track. We just need a consensus to move forward with the ordinance that is, that has been presented before us. We need a consensus. So if you agree with it, raise your hand.
I can't vote.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
All right. I got it.
You still up?
Still up. So the city actively, now we're going to talk about civic organizations. So the city actively collaborates with various nonprofit organizations to provide services to the city or to its citizens. These partnerships, we really do use these and utilize these to make sure that all the needs of the citizens are being met. I do want to be clear here, the city does not provide donations. We are not legally allowed to provide a donation to an entity the state provides for specific instances, but they are not really ever just give cash to an organization to meet their goals. However, what we do here, again, it's very specific. They provide a service to the city, and we provide them with, we provide them with funding to achieve that service.
And can I just, well, just to piggyback on what you were saying in terms of the legal aspect, there are very specific categories in our state code that dictate what a municipality, to whom and to what organizations a municipality can give any sort of funding. And so again, it's a lobbying piece, and there's probably 50 or so distinctions that go from anything from, you know, non-secular to the Salvation Army. And it just depends on who's lobbying whom. So each and every transaction has to be reviewed through Dillon Rule requirements of making sure that they were able to give that money. So.
My favorite is that a library is allowed to give books to a library foundation. Like that's kind of the level of specificity that we're talking here. It's not.
Yes.
So this slide here, it kind of breaks down how we dole out community and regional organization money. So, and again, like as we discussed earlier, we provide about $582,000 to, in specific charities that provide services to citizens that includes things like homelessness, food security. Also, if you'll notice, the senior services of southeastern Virginia, that's actually tied to a federal grant.
It is.
So if they don't get that money from the city, then they either have to get private donations to match it, or they could lose their federal funding.
Right.
We also have city council priorities. These were things that have come up in previous budget cycles to be included in the budget. You'll notice this here, where the asterisk is, is Complete the Puzzle. This is a program that provides autism services to children in Portsmouth. We also have a request that's here, not included up there, for the Police Athletic League for $65,000. Finally, I've also included all the different advocacy organizations that the city provides funding to, and that includes things like VML, NCLN, or the National League of Cities, and also stuff like the HRPDC. Earlier today, the HR Alliance, and then like stuff like the Workforce Foundation. Some of those are things that the city has signed an MOU to be a part of, and we pay basically either like something like per capita or percentage of this or that. Or maybe it was set 50 years ago, we've been paying that same portion ever since. We are seeking consensus here to include either or and/or Complete the Puzzle and/or the Police Athletic League. We're looking for consensus to move forward with that.
Can you throw something else in there? What I'm also looking for is evaluate the whole list. Make sure this is a list that you want to live with, not just what you want to add, but you want to live with what you got also.
Councilman McTomin, so you have the floor.
Yes. So to the city manager's point about making sure the list is something we want to live with, add, where can we see kind of the impact of each of these organizations and the programs that they already provide that we're putting? Like, I'm familiar with some of them, of course. But like in terms of, when we spoke in our meeting, I'm all about, you know, what do you get for every dollar spent? Right? So where can we see the impact statements from some of these organizations?
Can I answer that, Mayor?
You have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Man, through the organization themselves, one of the things that I'm requiring now is a report back to us about all these, the Hampton Road Alliance was here tonight because they're one of the ones that we provide money to. I know there's an agreement already that, you know, the region is going to support them, but we're providing money. So what are we getting for that money? So you'll see more organizations that come through here to do that same kind of presentation to this board, because I think it's important for them, not just you to speak to you about what they're doing, but them to speak to you about what they're doing. But I can get a report back from each one of them that signifies what is the money that we provide to them, exactly what does it do for Portsmouth? That's the question I ask.
And that would be helpful. And also how long we've been providing the money. I know, I think, Mr. Burke, you had gave, in the budget book, it was since FY '24, I think the number is provided. But I'm not sure if I remember seeing it for the civic organizations. I don't have the book with me. But it would be good to see if we've been long-term providing, you know, year-over-year support, the impact, and then so that we can bring in new additional organizations like Complete the Puzzle, or that we just called it the Police Athletic one. So yeah, it would just be helpful to see like, how can we introduce some new organizations while still supporting the current ones? And, you know, which ones, like you said, do we might need to take away or add to that list, to have those type of impact statements?
And then one of the general requirements of state law for us is that we do have oversight when we do provide funding. And so I think there probably just needs to be independent evaluation of the city, not just based on the organization's representation. I think that's what you're speaking to.
That's correct.
So we have to have our own mechanism by which we're evaluating these.
How do we do that?
You create a neutral checks and balances list on what is given. And a lot of these organizations sign MOU, which requires certain things within those MOUs. That's an easy way. We always advocate that an MOU be used in these scenarios. And so if, and if we don't have that, then there has to be a neutral mechanism by which we evaluate each agency based on the dollars.
Exactly.
The dollars promised and what we get from it.
Yes.
So are we, are we, okay, Dr. Doss.
So I feel kind of like I did last year when we had the same presentation, is that it's kind of such a glossy overview that none of us really are familiar with all these or understand it. I'd love to, at least by next year, when we get this presentation on these organizations, have an explanation for each organization so that we don't have to go, oh, what's that one? And there's one I'm particularly interested in, which is the youth center on Airline Boulevard. And I don't know which of these covers, covers that, so I can't.
Or if it does cover it.
What?
Yeah, or if it's covered anything in it. It may not even be covered by anything in there. What exactly are you talking about?
So that's, that's what I'm saying. As an example, I don't know what these are funding.
I think he's referring to Water Youth Services.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's referring to.
Yes. And so I don't, I know all the ones on the right. I don't know half the ones on the left or what they do. And so I don't know, for me to sit down for a week and research these to find out who they are is too much. If we could get some sort of explanation, like at least by next year's presentation.
Absolutely.
You know, when you were working through.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vice Mayor, you have the floor. When I look, Virginia Symphony, which I love them, but when I look at that $150,000 and you look over to the left at some of the organizations that invest in human capital, some of those figures look awful small to me. And it looks like it's out of balance. And I'm not just picking on the Virginia Symphony, but it's not the way I would allocate it, let me put it that way.
Understand, this wasn't allocated by staff. This is, this came from the people sitting around the table. Not this particular group, but somebody that was sitting around this table.
And I've said, and I've said the same, I've said the same thing in the past about it. You know, you look at the contribution to the Food Bank, you know, even the Hur Shelter, it just, just looks like it's a little out of balance to me.
And I would clarify, so most of them on the left side, they made an application to the city. With very rare exception, we do fund what they ask for, or we do not fund them. I generally go on the assumption it would be unfair to expect them to provide a service that.
So everybody on that list got what they asked for on the left?
Understand what he's saying. Everybody on the list, on that left side of the list. There are people that ask for things that's not on the list. That's not the totality of all they ask. That's the totality of what is then is going to be great.
Well, and that's my point.
Okay.
You know, don't make it sound like that that's all they ask for.
Well, that's all, for the people that's listed there, that is all they ask for.
So their application.
Included those numbers.
I need $62,400. That's not arbitrary, no.
Right. Okay, so, so that was, that's the figure that was on their application?
They said, yeah, this is how much we need. And what he's telling you is what we think the best route to do is either we fund you at $62,400, and if we can't, we don't fund you, we don't give you $25,000. So, okay, well, I still need you to do $62,000 worth of stuff.
Right. Councilman Hugo.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'll ask a specific ask. So on the left-hand side, we have EVMS. I think they've merged with ODU. And I'm wondering, have we circled back with them to really understand what we're getting from them for $85,000? Do we know what service we're getting from them?
They provide services to, they provide services to any citizen, be it, you know, obviously Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, anywhere that, that is in their area. They don't, I don't think they have a geographic area, but they do serve the local area. We are a member of, I guess it wouldn't be EVMS now, but there is like a, a regional consortium that we are a part of. And so theoretically, they could be on that bottom right list. However, they've kind of come back to us and said, we're providing a bunch of services to you. So therefore, we want enhanced amounts over historical. To your point, I think you're kind of asking, I think we discussed it in the one-on-one.
We did.
You know, it's kind of gets to the, you know, how do we feel about the scope being offered and us being a member of the consortium and trying to, you know, be cooperative with the, with the organization and the region? They provide clinical services, they provide medical clinical services to the citizens. And we will probably need to have a longer sit-down conversation with them going forward. I kind of mentioned there was one organization in particular that was not fully funded on their ask. And that was partly because of we weren't super satisfied with the level of detail included in the application.
Okay.
But one of the things that I wanted to add to, you know, we get this comprehensive list, and you know, of course, we can't fund everyone. But I think that we take a very comprehensive look at those organizations that impact our citizens in Portsmouth. For example, the Children's Health Investment Program, CHIP, they deal with a lot of prenatal and other issues. So I can understand how we get there. One of the things that I wanted to ask about, you mentioned adding the PALS, the Portsmouth Athletic League. Some of my colleagues, colleagues may not know what the Police Athletic League is, excuse me. But what they do is they provide a summer enrichment program for our children. And most of the police that volunteer their time and the other volunteers, they don't get paid extra for doing that. And some of them have to come out of their pocket to take these children on enrichment trips. And I just think that's a little bit unfair. We do provide funding to other programs, and our police do participate. And it's another benefit, I think, when our children are able to spend the summer around the police officers and understand, I think it creates a relationship. And it lets young people know that the police are not just showing up in the worst times, that they're showing up in good times. So I think if we're going to spend $65,000, that's a good spend of $65,000 to me. That's just my two cents.
I have a question. I support PALS as well. My only question would be with PALS. I know it's the police nonprofit, I'm guessing. Is there any current collaboration that they have with Portsmouth United, since it focuses on children and the police department?
They're not, they're not one of the ones receiving funding through that program.
So is it a possibility that they could?
Yes.
Go both of those avenues?
Yes.
I'm just trying to think of the best ways to leverage all avenues that the city offers. I think that would be a good start for them to kind of leverage that, especially when we're trying to go through all that we have on this list. Because at the end of the day, I mean, we can't create new money, as you say.
Yes.
We can reallocate the money that existed over departments.
I do think that there was a little bit of an issue with the conflict of interest that came into play because the police department distributes the funds and it would be for police organizations, or many of them are a part of it. So I think that was one of the things that was a little bit of a rub.
Okay.
So that we'd have to relook at that to make sure that that doesn't continue to be an issue.
That's why she's here. That's why she's here.
And you know, we talk about, and the other thing I wanted to add, we talk a lot about, what are we doing for our children that are autistic in our city? What kind of services are we providing to families? And I think I hear that more and more. Complete the Puzzle, help me understand what that means. I certainly would support, if we had the funds available, a program that brings in our autistic children for the obvious reasons. So can you just explain real quick, what is Complete the Puzzle?
Do you need some help with that?
Can we defer?
Well, I know that organization very well. Like, I can tell you as a parent of a special needs child, you guys know every time that I get an opportunity to speak to that. I do. This organization is an organization that reaches to the entire community, so it's not just autistic children, it's also many children, all children with disabilities, and includes their families. It's a purely voluntary organization. They do programming from cooking to kickball to soccer leagues, and this is, these are real, these are the things that fill the gaps where the education divisions can't fill. And many of our teachers and our teachers' needs come out to this organization and participate. So the kids are familiar with these, with the people involved. They provide clearance for their people who work there, it's weekends, it's night, and they're all over the community. What I like about Complete the Puzzle for Portsmouth is that it's based in Portsmouth, and you don't get that often for these types of special needs communities. And so this is really a key organization, much like the Hur Shelter, much like the CHIP program, that is providing a specific service to a need in our community.
Mayor.
So.
The founder of Complete the Puzzle was a part of my LEPCO class a few years ago, and her program has grown tremendously. Councilman Tillage and I recently sat down with her to talk about some of the things that they're doing. And so she spoke to the growth of the organization and her attempting to prepare for future growth, because like Ms. Graham Williams said, it's a Portsmouth-based organization, but she's also getting interest from folks in other cities, so.
And she doesn't say no. She shouldn't.
Right. There's such a need, is what she told us, that she expects to continue to grow.
Her name is Tamika Wen, and she's organized, she has a board that advises her with experts on the board. You all know I look very detailed at all of that stuff. They're running a clean, above-board program, and you just can't find that enough. So that's a good spend and a good return on the income.
Councilman Dodson, did you want the floor?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, you have before.
Thank you. So in order to, to kind of meet the additions, because what you were saying, Councilman Tillage, about maybe having PALs go through another way of funding, but it might be a conflict of interest. Mr. Burke, are the priorities on the right, my right, are those what the individuals ask, or can we play with those numbers? And the reason I'm asking is, like, for example, Virginia Symphony, did they ask for 150, or is that just kind of what we designated to them?
So with that 150, there is a specific cadre of services that we'd ask for. There's a specific list of performances.
Yes.
How you want to discuss the performances or whatever, that's a different conversation. It would probably take a different set of directions to stack. Everything on there, there is something directly tied to it, and that's why I've always kind of been reluctant to say, you know, provide X amount of performances for 50 bucks. You know, like, that's kind of, it's not really necessarily fair to the organization. So, yeah, I mean, there is some discussion that can happen there, but it's probably fairly reluctant.
There's some wiggle room there. Okay. And I've attended the Virginia Symphony concerts, it's a great way to introduce arts to our community. They have them at Norcom, I've been to a few at Norcom High School. It's free to the public, which is great as well for our community. Well, free in a sense that, yes, this fund goes towards making sure that our citizens, right, don't have to pay for those concerts. And it's, you know, you could take as many people in your family as you want, and so that's a really great resource. But to add things like, thank you for speaking on Complete the Puzzle, and to add things maybe even like the PALs, when you said the word, I wasn't thinking PALs, but yes, I'm very familiar with PALs and their summer camp, know lots of children that have participated in them, go to the field trips and so forth. So I think there's some, I'm hoping there's some balance that where we can work with that number to include these new additional orgs.
Last, last point on that. So with the Complete the Puzzle, just reaffirm what you said, with the Complete the Puzzle and the PAL program, is that an additional $165,000?
As currently presented, yes, sir.
So it would be an additional to this, or is it already built in?
Complete the Puzzle is the.
Right, I see Complete the Puzzle, but, so would the $65,000 be an addition?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Is that doable, or is that not doable?
All things are doable.
Well, I mean, but what I'm saying is, adding the $65,000, is that going to make us, is that going to put us at a deficit? Is it going to put us in a different situation?
$65,000 will, but if we do several things at $65,000, it will, so this is, in a budget the size of about $65,000, it's kind of a rounding area. It's not, it's not a major swing.
But we were specific, we were specific to those two things.
Yes.
I'm not talking about rewriting the budget, I'm talking about two specific items. Vice Mayor, you have before.
Well, are we contractually obligated to Virginia Symphony, based on the number of performances in Portsmouth?
Only if and when we sign the documents. We would not do this.
We haven't done that yet for the upcoming year.
How many performances are actually in Portsmouth?
I can't remember off the top of my head. They did several.
All of them are in Portsmouth.
Yes, every performance is in Portsmouth, and let me share something. The other thing about the symphony, all of those musicians are contracted musicians, they're professional musicians. So the symphony, you know, and I think that it's a good buy, and it's a good spend, because it gives our community, many in our community who would not be exposed to the symphony experience, it's a quality of life issue. And we talk about, we spend a lot of money on golf, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things that people don't get to enjoying their quality of life. The symphony has professional musicians, and they have to pay them. I ask the same questions, that's why I'm sharing it with you. I think that for what they provide, they do four performances in our city, and the last one that I went to was the MLK performance, when they recognized a citizen in our community for the work we did, Tyrone, they did Tyrone Hines. I think it's a good spend. I know it sounds like a lot, but when you've got a whole symphony with all professional musicians, I mean, that's the going rate.
That's cheap.
But the question is, can we add $65,000? Yes.
Okay. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor?
Thanks, Mayor. So there's an item that I passed to you that maybe doesn't belong on this list, but I want to bring it up because it has to do with homeless. So we, I engaged the P-hack Portsmouth Homeless Advisory Committee around the gap that we currently have in finding emergency housing for people that become unhoused at 5:00 on Friday, which for some reason seems to be always when those things happen. I know, listening to the chief at Portsmouth United, he was using some Portsmouth United funding to do the same kind of thing for victims of crime, but P-hack had put together a proposal, and I know you've been reviewing it, and I don't know whether there's funding in here to do that.
That won't be funded through this source.
So that will be somewhere in the DSS or VHS or one of those budgets.
CD-BG, that's where.
It won't be funded.
Got it.
But what's, just to give you an update, what's happening with that is, because we think that is a duplication of service, we have several groups that are looking at that to see, can we incorporate that someplace else, or do we actually need to stand up a separate service for that?
Okay.
Vice Mayor Moody.
Is the Red Cross not on this, I know it's not on this list.
We did not receive an application from the American Red Cross.
That's unusual, because in the past, they've been funded at about $50,000 a year, and they provide shelter for people who become homeless, you know, due to a fire or any disaster.
They have not reached out to the city managers often, now they've reached out to somebody, one of you guys individually, I don't know about that, but they have not made.
No. Oh, well.
So I just wanted to circle back. Thank you. Just wanted to circle back and make sure that as part of this discussion, an action item will be in the, for this following year to get impact statements from the organizations to also move, do I need a consensus for that, to move forward with?
No.
An independent look, okay, well, it's move forward.
That's all we're going to be doing.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we don't lose, you have that, okay, thank you.
Are you asking for that?
No, that's not for today.
Okay.
For moving forward, yes.
So are we okay with moving forward on a call for consensus on this particular support to civic organizations?
To include PAL.
To include PAL?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, we have a call for consensus, show of hands? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, you have the floor, sir.
Budget memo, it's the one I give you guys every year, Mr. B, giving it to you, and it's written form, it has the vote statute in it, it has some deadlines in it, just a reference, as you all know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Included in the fiscal year 2026 budget is money for a one-time supplement for $1,250, budgeted at $1.25 million. Today, we're coming back and kind of discussed a proposal that was brought to City Council, and then also a request that the manager and I kind of got some sense would be something that would be considered by council when we had our one-on-ones a few weeks ago. Staff was requested to evaluate a codified 5% annual cost of living increase for retirees in the city's legacy pension system. Staff engaged John Hancock, who is the contracted actuary for the retirement board, and they provide an actuarial determined contribution for the plan. The analysis that was provided back to staff projected the annual actuarial defined contribution at $21 million. That's an increase of $12.8 million a year, and increasing in out years over the current In addition to evaluating the 5%, staff was also asked to provide an alternative enhanced supplement for inclusion in the budget. This alternative proposal would increase the current supplement from $1,250 to $1,500 per retiree. The HRA is not impacted by that, it would still remain at $1,400 a year. That would be, we believe the total budget area impacted $1.4 million. The difference mostly just being any kind of fees associated with it. And also some updated census numbers from the retirement board. With that, I'd like to open up the floor for any, any questions.
Well, I think a year ago, the retirees, and I think we agreed to it, that we'd come up with a plan, so we wouldn't have to continue to do the stipend, which we were told at that time that continuing to do that, the actuaries, or the bond rating agencies frown on that, you know, one-time thing that you continue to do becomes a permanent thing, obviously. So, you know, we're going back to where we were a year ago and doing the stipend. Now, they're asking for a 5% increase. Obviously, the actuaries told us what that is, and they want each recipient, they want to cross the board increase. And I think, if I'm reading what they provided, I take it that the city attorney's office has said that that matter across the board is legal? Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
That is correct. ARISA requires us to have non-discriminatory practices, and because we would be giving equally across high-income, low-income, middle-income, that the statutes and the case law as of today support this process to be legal.
So in that respect, it wouldn't be much different than the 1,500 that we do across the board?
You are asking math, that is not my area. So.
No, I'm talking about in principle, not in math.
Oh, yeah, so the ask was for a consistent, everyone get the same increase regardless of income, and we were concerned that that would violate ARISA, and it does not under the circumstances. So, yes, that's appropriate.
Can I add something? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
A couple things. One is, from what I remember, the ask last year was to make sure that the 1,500 or the 1,250 was in the budget, so that they wouldn't have to come back and ask again for it, not that it go away. So what we did this year was incorporated into the budget.
That's correct.
Second piece is the difference between the way, if we do the 1,500 to everybody and make it a quasi COLA increase, because it's not really a COLA increase, it's just a $1,500 added to, but are we talking about adding that perpetually, as though it was a COLA? Or are we talking about the $1,500 just one time? Because there's a difference. If you add it as a COLA, you are, and I are committing to that much from that day forward.
Correct.
If you do it as a one-time stipend, we, if the budget can support it, we do it. If the budget can't support it, we're not required to do it. So there's a difference between those two things.
Which is not entirely different than general wage now. We give them 5% this year.
If we can't next year, then we don't get anything.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
So I'm saying that's, that's a fair comparison.
Fair, fair. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're back to, what they're asking for is predicated on this budget year, not going forward.
Well.
It's just this year.
What we're budgeting for is this year.
Yeah.
What they're asking us to budget for is future years.
Well, yeah, the 5%, you don't take it away next year.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, I support what they're trying to do and what they've asked for, you know, and I think it behooves us, instead of doing the 1,500 year after year, and I think the bond rating agencies are going to eventually call our hand on that, saying, why isn't it, why isn't it made permanent? Because it is if we continue to do it year after year.
But we're not committing to doing it year after year.
Well, no, we're not, but I'm basing it on what we've been doing.
Yes, yes, sir.
Look, I go back to, you know, this whole idea of what we do here, you know, I go back to, I always started the history of what we did as a city. We borrowed $168 million of the taxpayers' money to shore up a retirement. You can say, well, you know, it was the city's fault or whatever. When you invest in a retirement plan, you invest in a retirement plan. The performance of that plan, none of us have any control over. That's the truth. The truth of the matter is, once it was determined, ever since I've been on council, we have made a good faith effort to meet the needs of the retirees. They have a group that negotiates for what they believe is just due to them or perhaps entitled to them. But the truth of the matter is, and this is what we don't like to say, as I, and I use the example, my mother worked for a company for a lot of years, and when she got her retirement, she can't come back and ask for a COLA or something else, because. she can't come back and ask for a COLA or something else because it doesn't meet her income requirements or what have you. This is about fairness and equity, I would agree. But at the same time, let's not forget that the city did do what they were supposed to do. When it was determined that the money wouldn't be there, the city took $168 million. Is that fair?
What year was that?
It was before our time, but the city borrowed $168 million to shore up the retirement. That's how we got here. And so what I'm sharing with us is, we have made a good faith effort. Our retirees, those who are under the HRA, they still get their dollars for their health reimbursement account, of which the city also made a commitment after it was changed how they would pay out retirees' health care. In addition to that, we look at this every year, and I was a part of that discussion, and I said, and I will acknowledge that, we need a way forward. And after all of the deliberations and the information that was presided, this is the right way forward. Because what we should not do, and I can't support, that we take on additional exposure and debt because we don't do it for everybody else. And I get it. People say, well, they were the firefighters, and they were the police, and they were whomever else. But guess what? What about the cleaning lady that worked for the city? Didn't they do a job? And so what I'm saying is, if we're gonna be fair and equitable, this is fair and equitable. And the truth of the matter is, we are charged as a council to look at the dollars that we have available and do the best with what we have for the entire community, not just for a select group of individuals. And so I just wanted us to be mindful of that. This is fair and equitable. To write in a 5% until the last person is paid, that's going to be expensive. And I don't think we should bind future folks to that. I think that the group that comes before us and they lobby on their behalf, we do not put any barriers in front of them that allow them not to ask. And we respect the fact that they do ask. But ladies and gentlemen, we have to be fair to everyone. That's all I want to say. You have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. So the retiree supplement discussion, it does include those legacy retirees that were city, what you were referring to, that it does include city employees as well?
I understand that. Absolutely. I understand that.
Okay, so, and then the question, the, okay, so the 5%, can you, city manager said something that I'm not completely clear on. This ask is for a 5% into the pension system instead of out of, outside of how we've been doing this one-time stipend.
Yes.
It's still a one-time 5% ask for right now for just this budget cycle, but you...
If you do it that way, because if I raise your salary by 5% versus I give you a bonus of 5%?
Mm-hmm.
If I give you a bonus, I just owe you that bonus. If I raise your salary, I owe you that as long as you work.
Right.
So I don't get just to pay it this year, I have to pay it next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, until you're no longer around.
Okay, so with that point, then, this kind of goes to, I guess, a, just a how we want to operate basis, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because some of our discussion is about being more proactive and knowing what our dollars will be, not just for this year, not knowing what our dollars will be, not knowing what our obligations will be for year after year after year. And to me, putting it into the pension, while it might provide an increase, at least we know what we're on the hook for. Our obligation is year after year, and we're not doing this song and dance each year of this amount. We can afford this amount of stipend, this amount of stipend this year, $1,250 one year. I think I saw $600. And to me, it puts it in, this is what we know we're on the hook for, point blank period, and we can move on from there and not do the song and dance. And I think that's what I mean, like, it's a how do we want to operate moving forward as a city?
Vice Mayor Moody, then.
Well, I think it's about eight years ago, the city identified that many of our general wage employees were, their salaries were actually below the poverty level. And council at that time, with staff support, said that we needed to do something about that, that we shouldn't have anyone working at city hall here that was at or below the poverty level. So we took that as a challenge, and we did the right thing and adjusted their salaries at that time. Not all at one time. I think it was spread over probably five years. But we did the right thing. We saw a problem, and we addressed it. And those monies were reoccurring, you know, the raises we give them.
Absolutely.
And many of those employees are still here working. So, you know, I think this is about doing the right thing to our retirees. And I think when current employees look to the retirees, I think that does send a message on how the organization treats their retirees. They happen to retire at a time where some of those wages compared to today were probably, would be darn close to the poverty level, given the positions they were in at that time. So that's why I support it. I support it because I think it's the right thing to do for this organization, and they'll have my support on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you explain, so on this slide here, it shows an increase of $12.8 million compared to what we're currently doing versus what's being proposed. When we do, the bonus is $1.4 million, right? Can you explain why that's $12.8 million versus the $1.4 million? Because I think a lot of times we think we just drop the $1.4 million, it fixes it. So keep elaborating on that, please.
So, keep in mind that when we established the retirement board, and we have the pension system, the pension system has to exist all the way to the last person who's no longer on it. There is an IRS kind of guidebook on how to do that, and based on that guidebook, the projection extends to 2062. And it also includes a projected number of recipients year by year all the way through to 2062. So we know the length of the program, and if we do this, we know the amount that each recipient will receive each year going all the way through 2062. What that's called is the actuary accrued liability. That's the total amount of what we owe. Now, we do have a certain amount of assets in the system. The difference there is called the unfunded liability, and that is a debt. That is a debt that the city owes currently. What happens here across it, and we have an ADC, which is what is the annual payment on that debt? Now, when the city set up the fund, when they borrowed the bonds, the city set goals to say, we are going to be fully funded by 2037. The thought was that you are not putting an undue burden on future generations.
Correct.
Therefore, if you look at it, we're talking about budget year 2026, that puts us to 2037. So we have 11 years to pay off roughly $80 million in debt. And what this does is it says, okay, so let's look at, what if we increased it by the 5% annually for the next five years? That increases your actuary accrued liability by that amount. So now, but your assets haven't changed. You have the same amount of assets. So now you have a much higher debt, more than double debt to pay off in the same amount of time. And that's why, even though it's a fairly, you know, I think it's a 27% increase in actual benefits over the next five years, it ends up being much higher because we have a much shorter timeframe to pay it off.
That is correct.
And so that's why you see that large increase.
Can, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's not a quick, can you just define assets? I mean, you mentioned assets in there.
So the retirement board oversees an investor, and they go to the stock market, and they over, you know, they monitor the returns on those investments.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, that in itself is kind of a thing to think about here. You know, the, what you have to pay the actuary to find contribution, and what an actuary does is they say, we want to have it as level as possible over the next 10 years. It's kind of like you're saying, have a roadmap, right? What do we think we're going to pay every year? But that's making an assumption on the assets that you have at that moment.
Investments, okay.
Yeah. And so they're going to assume over the long term, even though you may have some years or some few months like now where the market takes a pretty large decline, and then you'll have other periods of time when it goes up a lot, they're going to say, over the long term, you should see about 7% annually increase in assets. And they'll say, okay, so between now and 2062, with all the benefits that you're paying out, but that's where you're getting the assets, right? To get back to your question, maybe shorten up the answer. That's the investments that we have. And that's cash that the city contributed via the bond issuance back in 2014, and how those investments have reformed over time.
And one of the things I want to say to, you know, my colleague Vice Mayor Lee's point, when we looked at that compensation study, we found that we had people working in our city that were making wages that were well below anywhere in the region and almost in the country. It was a compensation study that we did, and it was for the right reasons, because we had people working in waste management that was on food stamps. And that was the reality. This is totally different. And all I'm saying is, we have agreed, at least in principle, that we as a city recognize what is at stake here for our retirees. We are going to do something but to incur additional debt and saddle our citizens with that debt, and we don't know where the market is going, not only this year, but any future years, that to me is not responsible. And if we got to come back to the table every year to have a discussion, that's a fair discussion to have. But I can't support putting in a standard of 5% because we're back in the same thing. So that's my position. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I'll go back to what the manager said a little while ago. What the last city council agreed to last summer was to address this as part of the budget, address the retiree issue as part of the budget. We didn't say we were going to promise a 5% guarantee year over year. We didn't say that we were going to commit to $12.8 million a year from now until time eternal. We said we were going to address the retirement bonus issue, the retirement pay, retiree pay issue as part of the budget. What do the retirees want? Well, when I walked in tonight, I was handed this piece of paper. Piece of paper says, I want $1,500. I want $1,503. I'm sorry, $1,523. So I'm happy to satisfy that need for about $1.4 million and not for about $12.8 million from now until time eternal. Are we going to do what we said we're going to do next year? We're going to come back and address it as part of the budget because we all said, at least in the last city council, we're going to address it year over year at budget time, and it's going to be built into the budget. We're not going to leave the retiree, the legacy retirees hanging and waiting until after the budget is done, and then come back and figure out that we missed something and we got to go back and backfill. And so are we doing what we said we're going to do? If we do the next slide, in my opinion, we're doing exactly what we said we're going to do. We're addressing it as part of the budget. We're giving them the money that they said was, what was going to satisfy them, and we're doing it in a responsible way for the 1.4. And by the way, the piece of paper that the legacy retirees gave us said, this is going to cost $1.4 million. They did the same math that our budget guy did on this slide, not on the slide before where the actuary said to do this for time eternal is going to cost us almost $13 million a year. That is not what we committed to the legacy retirees we were going to do a year ago.
Thank you, sir, for that discussion. Councilman Dodson.
I know we've all had some civil discussions, but this is a topic that, if you'll appreciate me for a moment, I want to get out, if I can use the word pissy about, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Well, I would hope that you wouldn't use that, but there's another word perhaps. But, sir, you have the floor.
If I can get a little stingy about it, is for months now, I've been asking for the actuarial calculation over and over and over again so that I could do some history and some presentation on this so that we could all understand it very simply, and I haven't gotten that information. I'd like to get that information to be able to put some of this understanding of this matter and help these guys also to understand and bring it along, and I haven't gotten that information. I'd like to have a more direct channel to them if I could request that.
I'm not sure that you're ever going to get a direct channel to...
No, you're not, sir. We don't talk, that's the city manager's role. We don't talk directly to our clients.
No, I just...
I'll get that for you, but that won't change anything that we've talked about.
Understand, but it would help in future discussions, I think, if I could put the whole picture together and me make the presentation to understand this whole process and what we're doing.
Is there a presentation that you're attempting to make?
If I can get the correct information, I might be able to put it together, but it depends on how much of the information I can gather.
It's called CYA.
If there's something I can help you with, and we're trying to get you enough information so that you can put that calculation together, but I'm not understanding...
There's a couple of history points, historical points in that I want to research also. But I'm just, I'm aggravated by the fact that we've, I've asked for this so many times that, and I'm not getting it, and I'm just, it's like I'm repeating it over and over and over again, the request from these guys, and I'm frustrated at getting the information so that we can understand this a little more deeply, because the questions here, I could answer probably with one slide.
I'm not sure that there's a question that can't be answered. If there's a question that can't be answered, we'll find an answer, but if there's a question out there that anybody has, I can get you an answer to it. We're talking two separate things here. What you're trying to do is one thing. What we're trying to do across the table right now is something else. We'll answer any question anybody got.
I think it would supplement the discussion if I could gather that information. But as far as my position on this, I'd very much like to see us find the one point, if they're asking for opinions, we're going for a consensus. My feeling is to support the 1.4.
Great segue, sir. Great segue. So if we could...
Thank you, sir.
I think all minds are clear. If we could take a consensus, that was a part of the presentation.
That's part of the presentation.
We want a consensus to go forward. So all of those who are in favor of supporting the ask of the budgetary impact of 1.4 to provide the, is it $1,500?
$1,500.
To our retirees as proposed, please show, by giving your hand up for consensus.
So I have a question, though. Sorry.
Go ahead.
The other option would have cost $12.8 million. Am I reading that right?
Additional.
Yes, absolutely.
But not just this year, every year.
Every year.
We're committing to that, the actuary says, $12.8 million this year, and every other year all the way out to 2037.
It actually graduates a little bit as you go over time.
So it graduates up, though. It doesn't graduate down.
Yeah, it'll graduate down.
So we have the consensus. We have the consensus, sir. Do we need that?
I don't know which way that...
So there's four. There's four.
There's four.
It was six.
Wait a minute.
I think she said no.
You said no or yes?
No, I'm for the, I'm for the $1,500.
All in favor of the $1,500 stipend, please raise your hand.
Yeah, six people.
Four.
Five.
Yeah, five.
Okay, five.
Next presentation, sir.
Actually, because of time, I think. The only other thing, we'll go ahead and do your budget drivers because the revenue sharing is going to be absolutely more than a 10-minute conversation.
Okay. So when do you, we want to do the revenue sharing?
We'll do it at the very next, uh, work session.
We're going to do that on a Monday work session. Let's do that on a Monday work session because that will give us a little more time for question and answer.
That's not budget-driven.
I got you. So next presentation at our Monday night work session.
We're still in session.
Excuse me.
Hey, guys.
We're still in an active meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
All right. So this will be kind of quick. Most of the information you'll see in here is going to be in tab one of your budget book.
Excuse me.
Just for anyone who's trying to...
Thank you.
...spend this information. So the FY 2026 budget for the city enforcement is about $338 million. It's a 3.4% increase.
It's a three point four percent increase, and it is supported by two hundred and forty-four point five million dollars of local revenues. Some of the important initiatives in the budget include a one-account unified billing system, which will get as many bills as, that are given to our citizens into one place where you can pay all of your bills, or as many bills as possible, in one location with one account. It would also include a new paying classification plan that would, overall, in one year, increase compensation by five percent. What it would really do is put every employee in the city on a grading step based on the position. Currently, it will be based on your existing salary, but over time, it would come to reflect your knowledge, skills, and abilities and your experience on the job.
Good.
For education, we've allocated eighty-one point four million dollars for ports of public schools. That's a six million dollar increase or seven point six percent increase over last year. The budget also in the CIP includes funding in an out year for the K-8 school, and also design money earlier on. The real estate tax is at a dollar thirty with six cent credit. Water and sewer rates will increase by five percent to fund system maintenance and customer service improvements. Stormwater fees will increase by two dollars to increase maintenance and fund additional infrastructure over what we typically do. The city typically will put about seven million dollars in new projects, however, with the needs of the city and increased pressure on stormwater infrastructure, we're also recommending additional projects. EMS fees will be adjusted to align with service delivery costs. Keep in mind that currently Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements are capped, and this would help us to recoup costs better. And we did cover pleasure boats, oh, and then we're also reinstating the summer race program This here just kind of goes over our revenues. The vast majority of local revenue comes from local taxes, intergovernmental revenue, and that does include the casino and the intergovernmental because that is collected by the state, not the, not the city. And then fiscal charges, which is oftentimes like pilots, also inter-fund transfers. Of the, it also includes things like charges for services, fines for forfeiture, and that, and then also kind of discussion earlier about business boats, personal property. Business boats are part of that personal property, although a very small portion of that. And I'm trying to go through this as quickly as I can, because everyone's time.
Vice Mayor, what do you have for?
Trey, if you would, I brought it to the city manager's attention on the mosquito budget being decreased by a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I was concerned when I saw the figure because obviously mosquito, fighting mosquitoes is a big deal in our city. But you, you gave an explanation that I think the public should be aware of.
Yes, sir.
That it's not service-related at all. If you could expound on that.
Yes, sir. So you had flagged there's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction in mosquito control for this year. The two big drivers that are, that we are, we kind of are trying to catch up on some chemical purchases, mostly for, I don't know, it's killing mosquitoes, I guess, I'm not a biologist. And, you know, at the time, you kind of, the mosquito control person kind of pointed out that we've been getting really lucky at Cranny Isle in the last few years, and we don't necessarily expect that to continue. With them doing waterway dredging, that kind of ends up putting more sediment on top, which kind of keeps mosquito populations lower. As that dries out, you'll start to see more mosquitoes start to, start to fly around. So we're kind of getting ahead of that by purchasing more chemical this year, but you're not going to see that in FY twenty twenty-six, and that's the large portion of why it looks like it's reducing. But that will, to the, to the Vice Mayor's point, that will not affect service delivery. It won't, it won't impact the number of times you're spraying.
And aerial spraying is still in the, in the budget as well?
Yes, sir.
So FY twenty twenty-five was just elevated to adjust feature concerns?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. It was a good question. This here shows the budget by what we call functions, and that includes stuff like general government, which includes city council, judicial, which includes the courts, and also the sheriff's office, public safety, police, fire, E nine-one-one, public works, and that includes streets, highways, also engineering. As you can see here, the biggest, two expenditures in the budget are on public safety, at about sixty million dol, about seventy million dollars now, and, or I guess it was eighty million dollars, and then the schools' contribution is the largest single expenditure in the city. And that's our match to schools at eighty-one million dollars projected with a six million dollar increase. And this shows how, kind of by function, how it increased by as a percentage. The big thing with non-departmental was some perhaps more aggressive estimations on vacancy savings. That caused the non-departmental budget to go down. And then also some realignment, two, two departments related to risk. And here we have it by expenditure category, so that would include salaries and benefits, contractual debt service, and then again, also the schools' contribution is also included And then there was a question to review the use of gaming revenues. The budget projects eighteen million dollars of revenues related to the casino. Over the last two years, the city's allocation to schools has increased by eighteen million dollars. In addition to that, we've also been providing a PPTRA, kind of a enhanced supplement. If you remember, at the first meeting in February, there was a discussion about how personal property and then submit PPTRA rate. Keeping it at fifty percent is a subsidy of sorts to the taxpayer of about three million dollars of revenue that the city is not collecting as a result of having that PPTRA rate where it is. Also, the city did provide a six percent tax credit that's reflected here, about six million dollars. All of those things with addition to, you know, how things have kind of transitioned over the last few years, there is extra money there, I understand that, but that kind of gets into what, having the casino in the city has allowed the city to kind of restructure its budget. We have been asked to provide a comparison of tax rates.
Yes, thank you.
You know, if there's any question here, I'm happy to go over it. With the time, I don't know that it's, that I just go over them one by one, but.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question that I have is regards to machinery tax. So, you know, we always hear from citizens in regards to real estate tax and personal property tax being so high compared to other regions, but yet our machinery tool tax is one of the lowest in the region. And to me, it kind of points out a flag for me because we are a port city, and we look at the other two port cities, Norfolk and Newport News, they're higher than us. But then we always talk about not receiving taxes from our port-related, well, our port, but we do get machinery tax. And so I would like to see us find, if we can find out how much one cent.
Right.
Per machinery tool tax would equate to revenue, so that we can see if there's going to be some more relief that we can provide our citizens through the real estate tax. Because if we're not getting any, if we're getting reduced pilot fees and we're not getting our share of personal property tax from our ports, then machinery tax is the best way to get it. And when you look at the region, lowest besides Virginia Beach, but.
Vice Mayor Moody, so you have the floor.
To, to Councilman Tillage's point, some of that early on decision was made to tax the cranes, which is a big expensive item there, the ports, by the real estate tax rate instead of the machinery and tool tax rate. That, that's a, that's a huge difference in potential income, tax revenue for the city. With that said, Mr. Manager, I'd like to know, because I forget what Norfolk, how they tax the cranes in Norfolk, that'd be good information to know, what, what category they have it in.
You have the floor, sir.
The, we can find out what our partners or our sister cities are doing.
Yeah.
But I think the way, reason, the way it is heated through a settlement agreement.
No, not initially.
It's currently under a settlement agreement.
That was insensible at the beginning.
Right, and it became a battle. It's always been a battle, and we fought that tooth and nail to the end, and ultimately what the port has done, Vice Mayor, is suggest a decrease over time, what would be a taxable asset under, under the provisions you described, would ultimately become a state property piece, and then we lose all taxing altogether. So that was sort of the middle ground to be able to get a little more on the front end before it transferred over into, so as they buy new ones, it's not like we keep increasing, we just lose them. And that's a, that's a, that's a battle we continue to fight.
Well, I, I don't know. I just know initially, a decision was made to put it in the category of real estate tax versus machinery and tool tax.
Right, the commissioner has done that.
Be, be good to know what our sister cities.
Definitely, definitely.
Handle that.
Councilwoman Thomas, and then Councilman Dodson.
Thank you. On this slide, operating budget highlights, I see the highlight for technology improvement, process improvement, and education, but there's also another significant increase in our public safety. Why wasn't that highlighted, or can, shouldn't that be highlighted as well, not just the education piece? Okay. So I want to point that out because that was something, you know, when I'm looking at the biggest drivers across our budget categories, there was a significant overall increase there, and then back to just putting, having something to go back to our citizens with for every dollar spent, for every increase that we're asking. I've heard from some of our citizens that are, as we're going through this, this budget cycle, you know, hey, our water and sewer rates were just increased, or our real estate tax was just increased. What was, how was that prior increase used or put to use, and then how is this going to be put to use? I think as we're looking at the numbers, telling that story and kind of identifying, pinpointing, okay, those exact projects, we, we talk about it a bit, but to do that a little bit more as we're going through these discussions would be helpful, because if you're, if, as a citizen, you just had to deal with the increase in these rates, what are we doing the next rate increase for?
Yeah, and to that point, I think last year we did it, the video got a little long, but we included like prior year, what we had done with the money the prior year. One point I would make is that the rates generally, you know, some of them, the water sewer rate will go up, but generally the tax rates are not going up. What ends up happening is that the assessments are going up.
Correct.
And that's, you know, in Virginia, you know, we're obligated, or the assessor's obligated to kind of look at what the market rate is, not what, you know, there are other places they'll say, well, this is kind of what I think it is, this is kind of what it seems nice. In Virginia, they're supposed to look at sales figures and other factors that include it. So their bill may go up because the value of their property went up, however, generally speaking, we've, we've been pretty, generally, we don't raise rates very much. Now, water and sewer is different because there was a, you know, we're kind of fixed on what we can do.
Right.
You know, and, and so we, you know, we got to replace the infrastructure, but also there's not a whole lot more users that are coming online that we can say, okay, well, you know, we'll have the new users come in and pay the increase this year. We're fairly fixed in the number of users, so the only way for us to really do anything with it, and also maintain the system for the users who do have it and are using the system, is to increase the rates.
And I just want to clarify, I'm talking about this slide, not the table, yes, regarding our operating budget highlights that have these three. I think if we're going to do the biggest drivers, public safety is also another big driver here.
You, you were next, and then Vice Mayor.
When I look at this page that you have up here, we've seen this in previous years, it doesn't give me enough information to analyze this to understand it. So I don't know how much dollars personal property generates, I don't know how much machinery generates, how much meal generates. I don't have a figure there to say, can I tweak here, can I tweak there between each one of these categories? And that's hard to discern with all the pages we have to turn, it'd be nice to get some of the summary. And on the other ones, when we talk about the rate increases on the other services, to kind of look at that and say, well, how much is that generating? Does that category generate in terms of revenues in there? I tried to get through it in the budget book, it's, it's very tedious and difficult to do it the way it's written. I'd love to have it some clarity when we see presentations like this, say, because the machinery, I mean, the meal tax might only be this, this much, and the personal property tax this much. How do I know which is proportional to what we're talking about here in order to look at these and say, well, we want to tweak this one two cents, or we want to tweak that one five cents? What impact does it have? I can't understand the impact.
And, you know, I think something maybe we could look at doing in the future, so there is, a lot of that is included in tab five and six, I believe, or four and five.
So many pages to turn, back and forth.
I understand the number, you know, it's a lot, and, you know, adding more information is only going to make it more so that way.
That's what I told, that's what I told the teacher.
I can include the rate, right, but it's kind of, you know, and even to, you know, the question on machinery and tool earlier. There is also, there's also a factor on the assessment, right? So it's, because it's not just the rate, it's also how you assess them. And so, you know, there's kind of a thing of, is it a budget or is it kind of an encyclopedia? Because you're, you know, the more you include, you kind of have this thing that, no, I can definitely include the rate, I can, I can do that, and we can kind of look at the proportion of it, I understand that, and I could, that's something I can do.
I just don't want to spend ten hours, and I'm exaggerating, arguing on something that only makes a hundred thousand dollars and five minutes on something that could make us five million dollars. I want to know the proportion.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Moody, and we've, we've got to limit the questions, because I don't want to.
Yeah, we got to go.
I don't want to keep the citizens waiting.
I was noticing on the city council budget is basically the same as last year. Where, where's the increase that goes into effect in July?
That'll be included, that'll be included in the recalculation of months and now.
I asked that same question.
With also the other changes that we're making tonight.
Okay, so that, that'll be amended and.
Yes.
Included in the final budget that we adopt.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And also remember on this comparison tax rate that the commissioner of revenues does the presentation, who is primarily responsible for how that income flows, I'm looking at you, but I may, forgot, as well as the assessor comes and does his numbers and figures and breaks that down, so that's really to come.
To come.
One team, one constitutional officer that will provide more.
Thank you.
Can we also follow up on these, sorry about that? Can we also follow up on the, I asked a question about a month ago when Commissioner came here in regards to the one cent for personal property tax, and we haven't received that yet? Can we get a follow up?
Can you, can you repeat the question?
So we had asked in regards to what does one cent equate to in regards to personal property tax revenue? So on the real estate, we know that one cent equates to approximately one million dollars. So what is that for personal property tax and what is that for machinery and tool tax?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, we good? You have a couple more slides?
Yeah.
You have to be real fast.
Yeah, improvements in Ebony, Ebony Heights, Prentice Place and Edgewood Park, city hall relocation with the civic center being demolished, hopefully early next year, new K-8 school, public safety facility, and then also upgraded sewer pump stations.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, certainly appreciate everybody's input today. With all that being said, this meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene at seven twenty, ten minutes.